I don't even know if they can see me.
I don't have any real questions about it, but just like to ask that when Greg is back. We make the discussion about the cemetery and agenda. I know we have, I don't know how many of us received emails, but I've seen questions. So it seems like it's an issue and just will ask for our attention. Then get ahead of it. I agree the cemetery. Just our town cemetery discussions for years concerned about what's the plan. Makes sense to talk about that and also what our potential options are. Any other comments or questions on correspondence?
They just want to be found about DJ Donald James. Short period of time that he had a real impact on when we got involved and he's got to miss. Moving to Pennsylvania here in his family.
Yeah, thank you, Doc. Our DJ for your contributions. Those are emotions except for. Move to accept and approve correspondence A and E. We have three minutes, so let's go over and see if there's anything we want to talk about relative to the annual town meeting. Anybody have any comments other than what was mentioned already by Megan? I do think that everybody who's involved in great job at planning, getting, making sure we have form was a concern. And if the townspeople did show up and did, I was very impressed with the level of debate. What all that conversation and respectful level of conversation we had was impressive as well. Actually, the ancient town clerk who was sitting next to me commented on that as well. That it was pleasant to see a town meeting with debate and discussion. Sometimes here maybe unfortunately you don't get that. This time I really did. I thought that was good. Any other comments on coming? I don't have any votes on that. So it is very close to seven 10, so I'm not going to go next. Next item, we will.
It was the under the under the docs, I've got a figure out budget platform, a civic plus implementation note here in the town meeting.
I think that was one of the things that was that well, it's appropriate.
I don't have anything on my four doors.
Yeah, no, we're going to Tommy.
Because I know that that was that was.
Yeah, it's a more more robust budget development platform that will be available for the public. We have a version of it right now, but my understanding is that our new town accountant has been working with the vendor to see other features that we can use to enhance the transparency of the budget process. So that was part of the appropriation.
And it looks like Greg wanted to comment on the fact that with the free passage to cash article that we will be able to address a lot of issues that we were hoping someday.
All right, I guess I'll take one opportunity to just ask the board and everyone, we are using new technology today. So we have a speaker and microphone over in front of you. So if we can just remember to project a little bit so that folks at home can hear us, it's not going into these microphones. Right here. Yeah, no, it's we're doing some, we're trying something a little different. So it's Emily votes. It's this one right here. I think you can pick us up, but.
How is it sounding for those?
I think it's okay. People have been telling me. Linda said my voice is clear, so thank you, Linda. Yeah, exactly. Sorry.
All right, in seven 10, we have a public hearing scheduled for seven 10, and I will read the legal notice into the record. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, chapter 138 as amended. But a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022 at 7:10 PM. Town hall room 201, 195 Main Street, Maynard, Mass. 01754 to consider the application for a transfer of a retail restaurant license on premise for all alcohol beverages as a common victualler license for Chang Lu LLC, DBA China Ruby Restaurant at 42 Nathan Street, Maynard, Mass. Manager is Xiao Sean Yonggao. Is that you?
Yeah, that is correct.
Did I get it right?
So Xiao Yong is my first thing, so Xiao Yong, but Sean will be a lot easier for everyone.
Copy of the application is on file in the office select board and see posted agenda of the select board in case of location change, which we are here live. So we will take a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor? We are now in public session. The public is welcome to comment. Have a respectful level of conversation with that, which I think impressive as well. Actually, the ancient town clerk who was sitting next to me commented on that as well, that it was pleasant to see a town meeting with debate and discussion. Sometimes here, unfortunately, you don't get that. This time I really did, I thought that was good. Any other comments on coming? Right, we have any votes on that? So it is very close to seven-ten, so I'm not going to go next. Next item, stand, we will.
It was the, under the, under the docs, I've got a budget platform, a civic plus implementation note here in the town meeting.
I think that was one of the things that was, that, well, it's appropriate.
I don't have anything on my board docs.
Yeah, no, we go into the town meeting.
Remind them to have those.
Because I know that that was, that was.
I think we. Did you know Greg talked about that?
Yeah, it's a more, more robust budget development platform that will be available for the public. We have a version of it right now, but my understanding is that our new town accountant has been working with the vendor to see other features that we can use to enhance the transparency of the budget process. So that was part of the appropriation.
Yeah, I remember we looked at that a couple of years ago.
And it looks like Greg wanted to comment on the fact that with the free passage to cash article, that we will be able to address a lot of issues that we were hoping someday.
All right, I guess I'll take one opportunity to just ask the board and everyone, we are using new technology today, so we have a speaker and microphone over in front of you, so if we can just remember to project a little bit so that folks at home can hear us, it's not going into these microphones. It's right here. Yeah, no, it's, we're doing some, we're trying something a little different.
Okay.
So it's Emily's votes. It's this one right here. I think you can pick us up, but.
How is it sounding for those?
Think it's okay. People have been telling me.
Okay.
All right.
Seven-ten.
Linda said my voice is clear, so thank you, Linda. Yeah, exactly, I know, sorry.
All right, in seven-ten, we have a, a public hearing scheduled for seven-ten, and I will read the legal notice into the record. Notice hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight as amended. But a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two at seven-ten PM. Town Hall Room two oh one, one ninety-five Main Street, Maynard, Mass. Zero one seven five four, to consider the application for a transfer of a retail restaurant license on premise for all alcohol beverages as a common victualler license for Chang Lu LLC, DBA China Ruby Restaurant at forty-two Mason Street, Maynard, Mass. Manager is Xiao Sean Yonggao. Is that you?
Yeah, that is correct.
Did I get it right?
Uh, so Xiao Young is my first, first name, so Xiao Young, but Sean will be a lot easier for everyone.
Copy of the application is on file in the office of the select board, and see posted agenda of the select board in case of location change, which we are here live. So we will take a motion to open the public hearing.
Take the motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? What you best, yeah, I think maybe you just roll call them.
Okay, you can hear, not because of the voice.
No, it went into public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm yes as well. So we are now in public session. The public is welcome to comment. So we are aware that the former owners of the China Ruby have retired and have transferred ownership of the.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. So you're retiring and almost closing, so we're almost there. You know, just, just some little things to figure out. So.
Counsel, if I may, Sean, I'm sorry to interrupt you. My name is Danny McDonald. I'm the attorney assisting Sean in this transaction. I just wanted to make it known that I was also here, Sean. And Sean said, you know, the deal is set to close next week. Everything appears to be in order at this time. And part of the conditions to closing is, you know, getting this license. So we're happy to answer any questions anybody has or field any comments as necessary.
Thank you, counsel. I didn't realize you were here. I apologize.
No, I didn't want to interrupt you earlier, so I figured I would jump in now. It would be a good time.
Okay. So I don't have any questions. Does any member of the board have any questions?
Not really. I mean, we wish you a lot of luck. Looking on a establishment that's been in it for many years, I'm sure you know, so.
It's gonna be a fun challenge, but you want to work with the town, definitely. I think that's the most important thing, but, you know, keep the town happy. That's, that's a goal of ours.
Yeah, I'm happy with you. You gotta be happy too, so.
Exactly. It's gonna be somewhat stressful, but, you know.
What's your timeframe for reopening, you have one?
Um, so we're probably the fall, hopefully September. Yeah, that's, we're gonna go do some renovations. It's, it's about time, so. I think it's gonna be a good, good change.
You are, you are, you're the manager on site, or?
Yes, that's correct.
So were you in the restaurant business before?
Uh, yes, I've been doing it since I was eighteen years old, so. Yes, so with my parents behind me, they've been in the restaurant industry as well. So my father's been chef for nearly twenty, twenty-five years, and my mother, uh, how many years? Yeah, thirty years as well, so I think we have a pretty good base.
Well, this is a public hearing, so if there's any questions or comments from members of the public, this is your opportunity to speak. Feel free just to either raise your hand or speak right up. I don't hear or see anyone. So with that, if there's no other comments or questions, we can, we can vote.
We could do the motion, right?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the transfer of alcohol beverages at the retail restaurant to Chang Lu LLC, the businesses China Ruby Restaurant at forty-two Mason Street with new owner, manager, Chang Gao, authorizing the use of digital signatures of the three.
Second. Second. Okay, posted in the eighth. Second, any further discussion? None? All in favor? Heskey, roll call. Armin?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm yes as well. Congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Congrats, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
I would love to close the public hearing. Second. And that's why our whole problem is.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
I am yes as well. Public hearing closed at seven-ten. All right, item number eight on the agenda. At the town meeting, since we had just finished talking about town meeting, we we awarded, well, we recognized the citations for outstanding performance that the town mayor. And I don't know if anybody that was awarded the, well, yes.
Yeah.
Sally, if Sally was here online or not, and I don't see her, or any members of the Sesskun, the hundred and fiftieth committee, but we wanted to recognize them again here, and Becky, you certainly, we want to recognize for all that you have done for us as a board, for all the boards that I've been a member of and passports for that, and you will, I know that the plan is for us soon to be retired. We don't know when that might be exactly, but we wish you all the luck. We say thank you so much. We do have some type of a certificate, but we will forego.
Yes.
Did you, did you, did you have a sign down already?
Yeah. Soon. I mean, David, and a lot of all sign.
Yes. And congratulations. Thank you. It was well, well deserved, even though I know you didn't want to be recognized.
Boy, so I'm assuming you're gonna tell us when it ends, right? Before you actually disappear on us.
There is a doom right out behind my house.
Good. I know where you're going. But anyway, I don't, you're looking at the end of something.
I think so.
We have a fall town meeting that Becky might have. No?
Yeah, I know. All right.
So my plan is hopefully to see the China Ruby.
China Ruby, we're opening, we're gonna see it around the same time.
But. Early September.
Okay, and a new fire station.
Now it's supposed to be August.
Yeah. August, September.
Right. Anybody have any other comments they want to make?
I'm sure we'll be having more comments as it gets closer.
Yes, as we get, as we get closer to the actual.
Yes.
Part of your day. Or.
There'll be a lot of crying.
Probably other case. With, maybe we'll splurge. All right. Item number nine is the opposed marijuana delivery license host community agreement that is currently being worked on by a subcommittee group. Megan, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Sure.
For your comments and thoughts.
So. Okay, thank you so much. So we have here attached on board docs the latest draft of the UPA Inc. delivery host community agreements. And this is a document that communities sign voluntarily with, you know, marijuana business hopefuls to allow for their operation in their community. So for a mayor, and we do have two other host community agreements. We have two other retail ones. This is the first host community agreement for a delivery operation. And we have been working on it with our council and have a draft before you today. There are a few items that are outstanding, that are really kind of policy decisions. So this is the first opportunity this board has had to look at what's been worked on and comment on some of these items. I also have attorney Elizabeth Lyden here, who has been helping us draft it. So she is here on the call and can kind of walk me through some of the specific policy items. And we also have, I think we have attorney Gomes here as well, who is representing.
I'm looking for.
She's in the.
Oh, there she is. Okay. Hi, welcome. Thank you for joining us, both of you, attorney Gomes and attorney Lyden. There were a couple of items that, the policy items that you were addressing. One is, and I'm hopeful that either you or attorney Lyden can clarify relative to the three percent impact fee and how what is, what that's being proposed is different than what we have traditionally seen on that matter.
Sure. All right, I can speak to that, and then, and then attorney Lyden, if you want to jump in, but you know, there was something proposed in this draft. Communities, the, the standard is a three percent community impact payment. The proposed language that, you know, I advise that the town not move board with was related to a review of, you know, the items that were spent from that impact fees after the first year and a discussion with the, with the business about, you know, what was spent on, it'd be adjusted up or down. So that is, that's not the way we've typically done things. Also, I just want to remind the board that we do have a special fund for these impact payments, and they are appropriated at town meeting. So the whole community weighs in on their appropriation for expenses.
So the proposal from the applicant, for lack of a better phrase, was that they wanted to have a say in how we spent our funds?
It was more, I'd say it was more of a review after it was spent, and then a discussion about, yeah, and it was kind of a discussion about how it was, how it was spent, but like I said, I, I'm recommending that we use the language that we've typically done in the agreement, that is that, you know, the town gets the three percent of the impact.
To spend it as we see fit, as long as it fits within the constraints of the. Attorney Lyden, do you have anything to add to that?
Just that the, the proposal also included an adjustment, if necessary, to the fee after a review after the first year. So basically renegotiating the fee every year with a phase out.
I guess, I guess I would ask attorney Gomes, what, what's, what's the benefit to our community to do that?
Good evening, everyone. Nicholas Gomes, counsel for UPA Inc. And I just want to, for a point of clarification, the proposal to paragraph number four, the impact fee, it is not related to the town spending the funds. The request in the change put forward for the town is using the, what the law puts forward as having the community impact fee be reasonably related to the actual costs incurred by the town. So what is being suggested is that we do not have a blanket three percent gross fee for the entire term. Rather, we examine it and see that the three percent is actually being met by that standard of being reasonably related to the town's impact. And then here, it's equitable and fair in nature, that if there's a need to go up or down based on that, then it would apply. So that if, for example, UPA Inc. was causing unforeseen costs far exceeding the three percent what they'd be received, there would be a discussion on why there would be an entitlement to more and vice versa. So I, I don't see it as a change in the regard. And this is just a proposal in the nature of looking at the law that in this area, which is under examination by the legislature and potentially subject to change. But this is the purpose, it's not to take from the town, but it's to be as cognizant and following the law as possible.
Are you aware, how are we spending right now that impact fee from other establishments that we have in town? Are you aware of how that's being spent right now?
I don't know that specific information, but we're not trying to change that in any way, that once the funds go to the town, it's, there's to spend accordingly.
I, I'm having a little difficulty understanding why is it that it has to be different for your establishment and not for all the other establishments you have now?
I am proposing that basically the a change of the law in the time when the host community agreements were new, they were signed. It was basically just dropped on the lap of the municipalities to respond. Now with time to reflect and look at the law, study it, see what is occurring in other municipalities, how they are treating the host community agreements. Some have gotten rid of the three percent entirely, which I think is very unreasonable, and it doesn't make any sense. And that's going against the law. What I am simply trying to put forward to the town is a mere consideration of modifying the host community agreement, given what has occurred since the host community agreements first came to Massachusetts. And all this language is seeking is a time period to make sure that it's being reasoned, the actual host community agreement, community impact fee being received is reasonably related to the actual cost. And that's just following.
Who made that determination, attorney Gomes? Who would make that determination about what's reasonably associated, and would we be arguing this every week?
No, I would, as written in the proposal, is to see after the first year, it could be changed. To then have that, and it would be the town making the determination that it's been reasonably related. And here, I think it's three percent is, we're looking, we'd have to look at the figures and see how much money has come in, and then what the costs that the town is, can earmark essentially towards this company conducting business in the municipality, which is what the ninety-four G, section three D, in the language that I'm proposing, it's exactly right from there. It's reasonably related. So that's all that it's trying to do.
Do you think mayor has not been using our funds reasonably?
That was my question before.
No, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to say that. I'm not trying to offend the board or, or say anything in that manner. All I'm trying to do is, as an attorney, is look at the law evolving and changing and applying it. That's, that's all I'm doing, is applying it here from the statute to the host community agreement, in the standard that the state had, legislature has put forward. And that's all that this provision is trying to do.
Are you trying to get ahead of the legislature? The legislature hasn't said that it's gonna change. Of course, there's negotiations ongoing. Why change it? I guess it seems odd to me that you would want to change something before the legislature has changed it, just because they might change.
I am not changing the legislature. I am following the language of the statute right now currently, and that is the reasonably related language. But what has occurred across Massachusetts is that everyone has done the three percent, if not more, as a standard norm, because it was a new industry rather than carefully analyzing the law, applying it, and making sure that what the legislature intended, that the towns are getting their community impact fee, but that community impact fee has to be reasonable at the end of the day. So all that we are trying to say is we want to pay all that is due, and we just were having the checks in balance that the statute is intended for reasonably related. But if the town is not interested in it, it is not a take it or leave it position. It was a draft negotiation going forward, in due consideration, I would say, given the statute.
All right, and I would say, sir, that when you, when you came before the board on previous occasions, you touted the fact that the town would benefit from a three percent. And now to suggest that that might be reduced voluntarily seems to be somewhat disingenuous on your part.
And my only comment is that the language is applicable both ways, fairness, it was up or down, it's just looking to determine the reasonable related expense. That is all.
You would agree, you would agree that you encouraged us to, to move forward with your host community agreement based partly on the three percent benefit that the town would see, is, would you not?
Here, we are not seeking to take the three percent out of the host community agreement. We are not relying the operations of the business on this community impact fee. We've already agreed to having the three percent there, because right now that is the assumed value of what the reasonable related cost is, because we don't know, we're not in operation, there hasn't been a delivery. This is novel, it's new. But with an opportunity to actually have the business in operation, we can analyze it and actually determine what's reasonably related and not. But if the town wants the position of its three percent or, or not, that's what the, needs to be known during the negotiation period. All we're doing is looking at the law and applying it to the agreement. We're not trying to take any money from the town that's not due to the town.
I have a question, Elizabeth. This is a question for you. As, as I read this, I read this as saying that the there's a potential, if we leave this in, that the three percent would go up or go down based on the town's costs relation to this business, correct?
That's the way I'm reading it, is that at the end of the year.
It's not as though, so it's not as though we're, that anybody suggesting we take or monitor what the town is spending the money on, rather it's somebody's opinion. or monitor what the town is spending the money on, rather it's somebody's opinion or assessment as to what the town spends on this, um, enterprise based on the three percent. My question to you would be, what, what, what expenses would the town have other than, other than, um, a minimal or reasonable amount of, um, you know, tracking and clerical impacts? That, that makes sense?
So there could be, um, planning costs associated with any permitting. There could be attorney's fees associated with the negotiations. Um, there could be costs associated with police details if necessary, um, or responding to incidents. Um, the way the language has written, been written in the past, it's left pretty open, um, for unanticipated consequences of a business, um, just so that the town is able to collect any fees associated with those consequences, uh, without knowing what they are. Um, the, the way it's proposed now is based on pending legislation. But the way that I drafted it or the, that I, it was originally written was, uh, based on the current legislation, the way the law is right now and what is allowed.
So following along a little bit, what, what would, what would prohibit the next person in line in a contract situation with the town or people in a, in a current situation with the town, coming back to the town and saying, gee, those guys got a, um, they got a reduction in the, in the, um, money's due based on the fact that you're not, you know, you're a couple of years down the road and we no longer have planning costs, we no longer have, we no longer have zoning issues to consider. All we have to consider is, um, you know, uh, a, a monitoring by the, by the local officials as far as, you know, on permits go and, and collections and stuff. That number can't do anything but shrink after the first year or two. What's to prevent other people, if we agree to here, from other people from coming back looking for the same thing through other contracts? It seems to me you're opening the, um, Pandora's box of, of a, of a sort because you're just saying, you know, based on what we do. Well, I mean, I, you know, it seems, it seems like it's a, um, an open to, an open door. It opens a door to a lot of similar requests from other people. Is that not a fair statement?
So I could see it opening the door for future negotiations. Um, as for the current host community agreements, they are, I mean, they can, there's nothing preventing them from coming back and asking to renegotiate. But they are locked into a contract currently.
I'm looking even on a broader, a more broad scale, and I'm, I'm considering not just host community agreements. I'm considering other businesses in general, restaurants, um, you know, um, shopping, shopping centers, banks. You know, any, any number of people who recharge a, uh, a permit fee per year, which essentially this three percent is more or less a permit fee in the long run. What, what's to prevent other people from coming back to the town and seeking similar relief?
I think that this is, um, well, host community agreements have, are operating under a specific set of laws. And so I don't know that there would be a danger for other types of businesses coming back and asking to reassess the reasonableness of fees. Only because the three percent is allowed by legislation dealing with host community agreements specifically.
Thank you.
Attorney Lyden, I just have a question as well. Um, so do you recommend, it looks like your comment is here is obviously the town is willing to accept that, that language. Um, do you agree that at this point it is more prudent to keep the three percent in without having this, uh, having that awarding in, or do you have thoughts on that?
I don't think there's anything from preventing us from adjusting the host community agreement if the law changes. Um, because we'll need to be in compliance with it. And so we can move forward as it's written. And if the law changes, we can come back to the table and, and renegotiate at that time.
And that was going to be my comment. I said that, and David said the same thing. We're, well, well, we're thinking ahead of what we think the legislature is going to do. So from that standpoint, we'll wait until the legislature makes their, you know, recommendations of passing the law. And then at that point, we'll, we'll actually revisit.
One of the issues that was brought up for the legislation as it's written is, um, it doesn't talk about grandfathering of the existing agreements. And so that's something that was still to be determined.
So theoretically, if the law, if the legislature, uh, rules to change the current language, it may grandfather in the prior agreements. And therefore, we would be, we would be, uh, possibly hurting ourselves by agreeing with Attorney Gomes's proposal to change the language in anticipation of what the legislature might do. Is that basically true?
It's possible. Um, it's also possible that they could have us, uh, they could review our agreement and then have us change it in the future. But I don't think that would affect the way it's written now up to a certain point. So I don't, I, I don't think there's a risk in proceeding as it's written and then reassessing at a future date.
Jeff, you have any questions?
No, I'm comfortable with the language of the previous HCS then.
Um, so moving on, the other, the other change, and, um, Megan, I don't know if you want to talk about that concern that you have with the other aspect, which is, I think, um, has to do with vehicles being kept inside at certain times.
Yes.
I'm also, uh, on the same topic, well, sort of an add-on. I thought, uh, at some point, when we had some discussions when the applicant was here in front of us early on, it made clear that this would be two or three vehicles at most. Now I'm seeing the number six in the proposals. So things are escalating and, uh, before we even get started. And again, concerning to me that the story changes. Megan, go ahead.
Okay. Um, thank you. So, um, we're talking about another new policy item here is section fourteen under design in letter C about vehicles. So originally, our draft had language where, um, deliveries shall be kept inside the onsite garage when not in use. And, uh, the applicant has requested an alteration to the language, which would say that, um, they would construct a facility capable of safely parking, loading and maintaining ingress and egress for delivery vehicles. Delivery vehicles shall be primarily kept inside, um, the onsite garage when not in use for deliveries. And no more than six vehicles shall be permitted to park on the parking lot of the property during operations and overnight. Um, so this is a change, I think, from what we had talked about earlier, earlier and what the board had given for guidance regarding vehicles. So we wanted to make sure, um, you know, the board had a chance to look at both sets of language and provide feedback as we continue to negotiate this document.
Are we going to get excise back to the homeless vehicles? Let's say we include that.
I will check on that.
I think, I think, I remember the discussion of, um, you know, I think that's when I, that's, that's when I thought it was a good idea, was that there was going to be parking inside the, the garage part of that building. Um, as far as constructing another facility on, I don't even, is that, is that, I, I guess, is that possible? I'm kind of looking to fill numbers for that at first. But that's a planned thing, correct? Did you have to, correct, create another building for that?
Correct.
So again, change.
I was going to say, is there, is there a proposal for that? I don't know who I'm asking.
I think it'd be, um, the counsel for, uh, Attorney Gomes.
I, I can respond, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please, sir.
Yes, uh, so the provision regarding design, uh, in the vehicle C, the main intent of utilizing the garage is going to, uh, be the plan moving forward. The design that has been produced by, uh, the architect will allow for three vehicles to be inside of the garage. That is where the loading and unloading would occur. Uh, what we are seeking to do i- is to maintain true to that with having our primary business activities and, uh, everything go occur inside the garage. Uh, the remaining change to the paragraph regarding having the addition of vehicles is to, um, basically determine the town's willingness to allow my client to have the ability to park outside in general, and then opportunities for future growth and potential need for parking. And six is the number which would be, uh, the maximum at this time for this particular unit, given the redevelopment of the entire, uh, corner with all the other construction activities and earmarking parking for the other business types. Um, so that's why we came up with that six to put out there. Uh, but again, that is here and we're looking for the town's position on, uh, whether they're going to allow the vehicles outside and what we believe to be the maximum amount, six for that unit.
Here goes, part of the understanding was that we would have retail space in the front and that some of that parking would be available for potential customers of that retail space. Would allowing outdoor storage of those delivery vehicles occupy spaces that customers, potential customers for those retail spaces would use?
Oh, in working with the property owner, we are not trying to take away from the retail aspect as well as the new residences coming in. Uh, the majority of the parking is going to be earmarked for those buildings. So it's, it's, the six is the, uh, a small, uh, portion of the parking in the rear corner, uh, that is going to be away from where the retail is. And there is going to be other available parking. I believe there's forty-one, and I'll, I'll get the exact. I believe there's forty-one total, uh, spaces that are being proposed on this, uh, entire redevelopment.
Does that include the underground, was discussed previously, underground parking for the residents?
That is go, that's going beyond.
Parking spots being squeezed into that area?
I, I want to say yes, that is my understanding, but that's going beyond, um, beyond my capacity here tonight for UPA Incorporated going forward. Well, that's, that's my general understanding is that there's that many spaces, approximately forty-one, six of which could be reasonably attributed to our business. Uh, so my draft proposal to the town was to consider, uh, you know, that amount of vehicles at any time for this business onsite.
So, um, the six that are, are attributed to UPA, is that from a planning perspective? Is that from just a business perspective?
Uh, yes, this would be, um, I would, in my opinion, late-stage growth of the company in which they have the need for additional vehicles and additional employees beyond their initial hirings in the starting up.
And so the six does not, does that include the three that would be parked inside?
Uh, so here, it would be six outside, three inside. That would be the total capacity of UPA Inc. in this location.
So that's nine.
It's two originally.
Because in, this is looking for the potential and this would be maximum. Uh, I'm not guaranteeing they're going to even have this growth. But this is the, uh, what has been attributed parking-wise for my client. And whether or not they're going to grow to that size is to be determined, um, i- if it's going to even be allowed at all, uh, if it's considered a problem. Because the business can operate with the initial starting of, um, having the three vehicles inside. But then there's just a limitation on, um, growth into the future, having vehicles onsite, the efficiency of that.
All right, uh, good question for Megan. Um, if we're giving, just not paging down fast, but how long are the host community agreements, are they three or five?
Five, five, I think five. Attorney Lyden?
Yes, five years.
Okay, okay.
But nothing would stop us from doing amendment. Let's say we sign off on three. Or let's say we sign off on the internal units and they come back and say we're going great. We'd like permission for another three and we can make that adjustment in the middle of that five-year period if we come to an agreement with. Is that correct?
I believe so. I think any party can, can request to open it up, um, and discuss whatever items they want to.
As a matter of fact, our last discussion on, on this topic was Attorney Gomes was suggesting that we could come back and review it. It seems odd to me that the Attorney Gomes would want to review something that's favorable to his company on one side and have no problem with coming back and negotiating with them when it's something that we have a concern without, without. It's, he wants it in there without the need for coming back. I'm just concerned about the approach here.
So I think if you've learned anything, um, about our board, uh, we do tend to go into the very concern, obviously. Um, especially with a new, um, a new way of, of retail. Um, a new industry, right, that's what I'm for. So I, I think that's, and, and my concern more is that there does seem to be, I, I understand that, that plans change and plans develop, you know, as things get flushed out, you might decide something's a better idea. I completely understand that. Um, but I, I, I have a hard time saying, yes, you can do the nine vehicles right off the bat. That to me seems like a lot.
I'm aligned with Justine, but if you have the three internal vehicles and business is going great, which means it's also good with the town, that's mutually beneficial. And at that time, if you ask for another three and it's, looks like it's going to work for everybody, I don't see why we can't adjust that at a later date.
And I think that would also, that, that approach would also allow us to have an understanding of what the impact is at the intersection and the impact is on the downtown area. To, uh, you know, how it appears with, uh, parking of overnight parking of vehicles, et cetera. Well, there's to be a compromise on that, I, I agree. So we know we're not voting on anything tonight. This is just a discussion and we're going to have to have some further discussion. Because I know that the order, the organization, the group is working on the host agreement itself, still hasn't finalized its work. So this is really just to get some updates. No votes or anything. We're not committed to anything. It's just more or less, this is brainstorm.
I guess. My plan is to take the input I received tonight and, um, incorporate it into the draft for the board to review at a, at a later date.
Megan, and do we, do we have, um, I know, I know we have all sorts of vendors, um, the architect and the, uh, the owner of the property, the developer, or other, what, do you, do you have, we have a parking layout? Uh, you know, the map of the parking to get to the four ones, do we have?
I believe we do, um, and this is for, for those listening. Uh, it was for involvement, yeah. We, we're also, we're not discussing, um, this on the agenda tonight, but it is related because there's, you know, we're also working on a development agreement for the site. And that is, you know, talking about parking is kind of a reason why we're doing both of these together so that there are decisions made, um, in the best interest, uh, the town and the project, and we're not contradicting each other. So, um, I do believe we have a basic layout of what they're thinking for, for parking from the developer. Um, and so I can share that first.
Dr. Room, I saw your hand up, and I don't want to ignore that. If you have a comment you'd like to make, feel free.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Dr. Matanda Ball. And first of all, I want to say thank you very much. I'm happy to see the progress happening since, uh, November seventeenth, I think, is when the town agreed that we were going to go into negotiations for a host community agreement. My concerns are that this three percent, my understanding was it's supposed to be a cap and that it was supposed to be something negotiated and that it was not an automatic three percent. And especially as an economic empowerment applicant, I was told that we could be able to negotiate for less. And my other concern is, when can we have a vote date? Because we've already had two community outreach meetings and we've gone the six months already because each community outreach meeting is only good for six months. And so we'd like to really kind of figure out from the town what more you need from us and how quickly we can proceed because this is a very harsh economic burden on us, the landlord and everybody else. And we would like to get this started since other companies have already started and they're way ahead of the game.
Uh, we're, we're still in, uh, you know, we like to work with. Uh, we're, we're still in, uh, you know, we like to work with uh, our council, we like to work with our administration. And they are working on our behalf to make sure that we stand what we're getting ourselves into. So we're not, we're not going to rush anything and I can't give you a date because they're going to sort of direct us as to when we're ready. And then we'll have a discussion about how to proceed from there. But I do also want to comment, Dr. Ruma, where you had suggested that, um, you thought three percent was a cap. And just about ten minutes ago, your attorney represented to us that he would even negotiate a higher limit if it found that. Um, that it was necessary for the community. So, once again, I'm getting mixed communications between you and your council and the presentation that's being made to our community. And I want to make sure that we're not confusing people or us or the process. Um, because I'm getting a mixed message from you than I did from your attorney just about ten minutes.
Alright, uh, well, just in, Mr. Chair, if I may, in, in closing here, it's been an excellent discourse on the. Public and private considerations of the host community agreement. Um, uh, the next step would be to uh, have continued discussion between the attorneys and. Uh, getting a formal response to the actual draft proposals put forward. Um, and there were some other comments as well, which we'll, we'll go through then. And then report back at the earliest select board meeting, yes, the, uh, and the client is very interested in moving forward quickly. And will expeditiously respond to the feedback received today, as well as any further comments from council, thank you.
Are you looking for feedback on the hours of operation as well? That was, yeah, that was gonna be, um. Alright, so, um, I think it, it's really blank right now. You know, the board has always determined the hours of operation for, for the um, community, the post community agreements. So, what we have for rides right now is nine AM to ten PM most days. They do nine AM to eight PM on Sunday. And then wellspring is ten in the morning to eight PM each day. Um, this is obviously a little bit of a different business model, so, um. If you had, if you have feedback today, happy to, you know, hear about it, if you want to think about it at a later time, um. You know, I just want to put that idea in your head that we will be asking for um, some guidance on hours of operation for this business.
I don't necessarily mind it, just because I, I mean, making sure that it's okay with the butters. You know, with the, with the traffic that might be coming in and out. But I would think that with this model, it will take a little while to dry places, so, um. I don't necessarily think that that's, that's a huge problem, um, but that's just my personal opinion.
Other than the impact on early morning commuting time, people coming in and out of that location, which is already a difficult. Intersection and a difficult location, especially during school season, riding buses and whatever might be going through there as well. Um, and how that might tie up traffic. Me running all the hours. You're talking about three cars, we're gonna sit, wow, we were up to nine just a minute, so.
Now we're at three, I, I don't.
I, I personally won't see an issue with that, I mean, I agree with the retail, um, maybe just something like, I'm looking at.
I'm aligned with Justine and Armin, uh, don't see any significant issues with they have as long as the noise is reasonable.
And are the vehicles gonna be sedans, right?
Yes, the intent, yes, Mr. Chair, uh, if I may, the intent is to use sedans for deliveries to consumers. So there, although wholesale drop offs of uh, large quantities of product to fill the location would be a larger truck. Um, minivan, but for the actual delivery to the consumer, we're talking about discreet unmarked sedans.
Thank you, uh, which raises another issue, um. What is the planning on delivering to your location the product? How does it get delivered? Does it get delivered in the same vehicles that do the deliveries? Or is it a bigger truck as you just described? And how often are those trucks going to be there? And during these hours of operation, to Jeff's point just a minute ago, relative to, well, it's only a few vehicles going in and out. What types of vehicles are expected to go in and out with deliveries and how often?
So the um, wholesale transfer to our facility would occur on a weekly basis. Or even bi-weekly, it is not something that would be reoccurring on a daily basis such as our actual consumer deliveries. So the three sedans will be on the road on a daily basis. We estimate they're going to load up and be on the road for a significant amount of time, a few hours, making their deliveries and then returning. Uh, in one shift, the delivery driver will uh, approximately deliver one full load. And then potentially come back for um, a half load or less, if at all. The larger vehicle, like I said, is on a weekly basis as needed and we don't expect it to be uh, much more than that.
Thank you. Alright, any other comments or questions? No? Okay, we'll continue at the town, at the town side, working with council and with the administration and um, we'll be forward. And it's also sort of on the same track at the same time, the whole government agreement, the private location itself, so. Thank you all for uh, your participation, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, item number ten on the agenda is the Regional Housing Services Office. And I saw Liz Rush was on, another Liz, there she is, hi Liz.
Hi.
Welcome, and uh, hold on one second, let me get to the right spot on my agenda here. Alright, I assume we're going to continue the agreement that we've had in the past, Megan, do you want to take this, just to sort of get us a, an overview?
Sure, um, yes, this is the inter municipal agreement. It is, um, you know, pretty standard for, for the town of Maynard. I think Liz, correct me, but I think this is our third year um, in partnership and it's been incredibly. Um, beneficial to the town, I mean. The amount of work that Liz and her team provide to our office, me particularly in my office. Um, managing housing, you know, is, is complicated, it requires an expertise, it requires a level of attention to detail. And, um, you know, the Regional Housing Services Office provides that. We also benefit from learning from, meeting regularly with these other towns, learning what they're doing. And joining them on, you know, riding program. So, we, we just had a meeting a few weeks ago, which was our annual meeting with the town managers in this group. And, um, you know, everyone is, is looking forward to continuing another year of work. Um, so, we do have the agreement here and I can turn it over to Liz if you have questions about the agreement and she also has a presentation.
Yeah, I saw the presentation, Liz, if you want to do that presentation, it looks similar to what we saw last year, but if there's uh. If there's adjustments to it or comments you want to make, feel free, take it, take it away.
Sure, thank you, can you hear me okay? Perfect, um, so the presentation is exactly what you saw, um, I don't know if exactly, but pretty much what you saw in prior years. Um, and we do the same thing, I know that members of the board rotate on, so maybe not everyone has seen it. And it's an opportunity for members of the public, um, to also see what the Regional Housing Services Office is all about. So the next slide shows how we're organized, are you doing, are you, will you advance for me, Megan, thank you. Uh, so we have the, the nine communities and we're hosted out of the town of Concord. And they cover all of the staffing and contracting and all the member towns receive the services for their fee. It's a, it's a pay in July for services all year. And if there's, uh, if you, you, if you paid and you don't use all your services, you do get a refund, so, um, it works in that way. So it's a three-year IMA term and the folks that set it up, um, wanted to have it amended every year. So we have an opportunity to come visit you on an annual basis to be sure that it's meeting the goals of each of the member towns. Next year will be an, the next uh, three-year full IMA term. So the next slide, um, just goes through, um, this is what we do, we do ownership monitoring. Rental monitoring, both the local initiative program, um, and home, now I was just gonna say the ownership monitoring. Um, I see on your agenda today, you'll have the regulatory agreement for one of your ownership units, so it's really helping with that kind of thing. We have program support for rental and mortgage assistance, which we've done for Maynard, both of those. Um, and the inventory monitoring and then just general program management, we do homeowner training. Um, and property manager support for housing initiatives and so on, as well as local and board support. So those are any special projects that come up and we help your trust when they have, you know, questions, um, and so we're glad to do that. And then the last page, I'm just gonna do this all very quickly, right, so the last page is the, the budget. And here's a lot of numbers here and you can see Maynard is really coming, you know, this year FY twenty-three. Um, pretty much exactly to what FY twenty-two is in terms of number of hours and the um, amount, which is almost twelve thousand dollars. And, um, you know, that, that, you can see that shaded number are, you know, this is a. Our hourly rate actually went down for FY twenty-three, which is, um, it's a bargain for all the member communities, I would say. Um, okay, and then the last page is just a summary, uh, so this is eleven years in operation. And we think it's a good model, it offers proactive compliance monitoring. Um, it's a pretty efficient use of resources in that you can just tap into, you know, some housing technical resources. And again, the regional approach and being able to share with the other neighboring communities.
Thank you, Liz, that's very helpful and I would echo the comments that Megan has made, thank you for the support. And the help that you guys have given to us on the various programs that we've had to run. Uh, and I know that it has saved us enormously if we were to gonna have to try to do some of those programs ourselves, so thank you. Any comments, questions to the board? No, alright, so now we are moving to approve the, um, the regional housing agreement. As it's been presented, any other comments, uh, Megan, before a motion is made relative to changes that are there or anything like that? Alright, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the amendment to the Regional Housing Services Office Agreement as presented.
Second. Any further comments, questions, all in favor? Motion passed, you next. Alright.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a nice summer. Alright, uh, item number eleven is use of town property, three different items on the list. For town property use. Let's go one at a time, uh, first, starting with uh, the land of budding, the Asper Boys and Girls Club. Megan, you got any thoughts on that and comments on that?
Um, I don't, I think, you know, it's just a standard, standard request here to use the land adjacent to the Boys and Girls Club. And this is for picnic tables for summer programming.
Okay, so, I have a question, is this, is this a repeat request? When is the first time?
So, a little historical, so we request, we requested a permit for foliage. And they've had some issues with the water down there at foliage, so it's also includes slipping slides, not just pick your table, so. Um, when you don't have water, it's difficult to have a slip and slide. You may, more of a stick and stay kind of approach, but. So, we, uh, we talked to the town, we talked to Kyle and, and Justin. And we came up with this piece of land literally, um, just across from the club. That, uh, roughly is about two hundred and fifty feet, thirty-eight feet wide. And the typical slip and slide is a little bit deep wide, so there's plenty of room there, plenty of drainage and everything else, so we use our water from our bin. And you're putting, and you're putting the picnic tables in that enclosed? Yeah, and there's picnic tables there now, there's like three or four. Cause last year, or the year before, you had it on a lawn, right? Correct, we're installing a new playground, so there's not a lot of. Yeah, it's actually coming along pretty well, so there's not a lot of room, pick your tables anymore there, sorry, man.
So, so which side, so is it the side that's closest to the Parker Street intersection or Parker Street, Great Road intersection?
Right, so, front door is Great Road, back door is, is on, sort of, it's Parker. And then that strip of land is literally right behind our back door.
Oh, so it's the behind, it's the.
Yeah, it's right, and it's right along the parking area.
Alright, oh, it splits the two areas.
I was thinking you were talking of the area between the building and one, and Art Street, and I'm saying, so it could slide right up.
Yeah. No, so it's in the back.
Alright, yeah, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, so hearing that, is there a motion?
Sure, I'm going to approve the use of town property of budding of Boys and Girls Club of Assabide Valley from June twenty-seventh to August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Intention to conform compliance with all federal, state, local, public health and safety guidelines.
Second.
Any further comments, questions, you're in, all in favor? Pass it now, second use of town. Second use of town property is the, uh, budding land, which is the new fire station, thirty-two suburbs. This is for, uh, irrigation lines by the budding private property. I think we need to hear a little bit about this and what it's all about. I think I saw, uh, Mr. Lisa is on, on the call. Hi.
Tony.
Hi, Tony, uh, tell us.
How are you?
Good, thank you, tell us a little bit about, um, what this is all about and what the plan is.
Uh, pretty simple, um, you know, I had developed this property, I guess, a couple of years ago at this point. Or finished development, uh, the fire station's being built next door. Um, and our access road and the, uh, runs right along. The fire station's property line. Uh, and that border, if you will, is. Uh, supported on the fire station side by a retention wall that has the fence on it. All of the trees, I mean, the entire lot was cleared to, to literally nothing. Um, and there was a really nice, uh, there's, there is a really nice landscape plan that is being implemented. Um, and, uh, as I have invested heavily in the landscaping in my property. Uh, I want to irrigate at my own cost. Um, the small amount of plants that run along the driveway and the trees. That run along the parking lot, uh, which abuts, uh, the land and. I will be, you know, that I, I had to agree or they asked me to agree, which I agreed to, um, sort of. Uh, changing a minor elevation, uh, which took place to, to get the. Installation of the parking lot correct. And when that's complete, you know, I'll, I'll put grass in there and I will have irrigation on that grass and it's really a matter of extending it. What is essentially on the town's property, but basically right along the property lines, the length of the driveway. And, uh, it's just, uh, you know, the town's making a substantial investment in the landscaping and I want to maintain it, the, the. The fire station's property is not being irrigated and, um, you know, my hope is to just keep it looking, uh, nice and. Um, you know, generate some, uh, return on the town's investment in mine, so.
Okay, um, comments from the board?
Yeah, the only question I have is, um, it's, when you talk about irrigation, you, you talk about a permanent, a permanent structure. Or a permanent, you know, something permanent, is there any issue with this, Megan, insofar as, um. I don't know if the term is easement is correct, or the, the, does, what does council say about, you know, someone else putting? That on town property, is that something we have to be concerned with?
She has.
That's a good question.
She has commented. And we require county.
Okay.
Approved. Eventually. Or, and to this memo that's in the packet that we got, she, she indicated that you couldn't do a license until the next county was trying to. So if we approve this, essentially presumably Mr. Lisa comes forward to put in his system and then the town could theoretically deny the easement. And if that happens, I guess you would have to rip out whatever you put in.
So I mean, what, what we're putting in is, you know, less than a couple of hundred dollars in materials. It really is drip line that's gonna get wrapped around trees, bushes and plants. The other, I don't know if you have, I had, I had sent Chief Stowers a little map. And if you have that, so the red lines along the driveway is kind of the town property. And most of the sprayers that will be on my grass, you know, we could just set them up to hit the trees that run along the parking lot. So if, in theory, the town denied this, we could just set those heads not to hit the, you know, not to hit that plant material along the side of the parking lot. And we could just clip and pull out the drip lines, which again is literally, I mean, it, it, less than a hundred dollars in materials, to be honest with you.
I think I'm concerned about, it's not, it's not the amount of money for, for the part. It's, it's the fact that it's private equipment on town property and underground. I'm, I'm a little concerned and I haven't.
It's not, I mean, it wouldn't be underground. It would be on the, the drip lines lay on top of them, ground under the mulch.
So, and where do you get the water from?
Uh, well, the, the service lines will be on my property. And as it transitions to the bed, which is the town property, that's where we would run the drip lines. But I'm gonna, if you know, we're basically gonna run a line around the back of my, the back border, up one side, across the back and over to that side of the driveway.
There are any concerns of potential leakage that would lead in the wintertime especially to a freeze-up situation that would not be anticipated at this point?
Uh, we, they have to be drained in the winter, so they get shut off and blown out, so to speak. If not, you know, we would lose the backflow preventer and run the risk of having an issue at the building. So, so any, any irrigation system gets religiously blown out every, before any winter.
And I respect that, and I respect the fact, quite frankly, that you've done such a great job at that property there, revitalizing and making it look so nice. So I, I very much respect that. My concern is you may not be the owner of this property forever, but by giving a permit to do this becomes somewhat permanent on the town's part to allow this. So I'm concerned about a potential safety hazard that could be created. Maybe I'm totally out of left field, I don't know, but.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say out of left field, but it's like, if of an if of an if, sure. And I'd be happy to, if I ever sold it, pull it out. You know, I, uh, to some, this, this is, you know, I'm in this business. I, I have, I maintain my own property the same way. I maintain my investment properties the same way. And, you know, that, that construction, if you've seen it, it was obviously just very aggressive and right up against the side. And, you know, without the landscaping, my, my tenants are staring at a brick wall. And while everything's getting planted now, I just, I, you know, I want it to survive. I want it to be maintained.
And specifically mentioned Mr. Lisa, so presumably a new owner would require a new motion. I, I think this is the neighborly thing to do.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the recommendation from Wayne, and he felt the town engineer threatened not to go forward.
And what was it, because I need to see that.
It's in the email. It says, it says, he said, okay, so it's unnecessary for the irrigation across the line. I'm not even sure the irrigation could be installed that close to the wall blocks and stone footing without disturbing the well-compact and wall foundation base. There is no reason from my perspective to allow the private irrigation on town property and recommend against allowing that this time. So I.
So that, that, I mean, that is incorrect. We're not digging into the line. The drip lines lay on top of the ground. And, and just for clarity's sake, that, that block wall has eighteen inches of drainage behind it, uh, intended, whether it's irrigation or any other water, to draw the water below it into an, you know, basically an expulsion pipe, um, which takes it somewhere, you know, somewhere else in the property. And that's not just the construction of that wall, but any retaining wall would have that behind it sitting. And actually, if you go look at it now, you can see the, you know, the drainage between the land, if you will, and, and the blocks.
Have you heard anything from the false building fire station, the actual construction firm, relative to any concerns that they may have on this, or any thoughts that they may have on this, to sort of give us some type of guidance? Uh, my concern, my concern is that we got ourselves into a situation that, that at the end of the day costs money somehow because we, we allowed something that then causes this problem on the road. And we're either in mitigation to fix it, or it's costing us money to fix it or whatever. And I want to avoid that. And I'm not thinking that you're going to put forward to this. It's gonna be an accident if it happens. It's an unforeseen set of circumstances. And to Justin's comment about our town engineer recommending against this, I'm not an engineer. And I'm concerned about his, about his recommendation.
But the thing is, clarification, clarification is, is you aware that this is not the irrigation system?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what he's aware of. And I don't think we should speculate about what he's aware of.
Because of the difference between, uh, surface and, and ground.
I get it.
I, I don't, I don't think you can speculate on what he knows. And what's, what's the rush? This is, this is a task we done tonight. Yes.
Well, the plants, the plants have been put in.
So that means you need some water.
But you can hand water them for now, or somebody.
Hose, the hose.
I, I do not, I do not have the, I do not have the wherewithal to be there every other day watering the, the, the plants.
Could be on a timer?
It, I mean, you're suggesting a sprinkler, it's.
Oh, I, I, again, I'm ignorant on this. Tell me, how does it, how, how does it make sure that the plants can get water?
Oh, the, the irrigation system has a, a ti, a timer, a clock that has separate zones. And so we will be adding two zones. One, that is the drip line, which would be running along the driveway. And then the other would be sprayheads that we are installing on the grass area, which we agreed to basically change the slope of to accommodate the firehouse, the plans for the parking lot. And, uh, you know, those will be two separate zones, run on clocks, run on a timer that, that goes off. Uh, you know, stop me if it's too much detail, but they, it's less often in, uh, May, June, more often July, August, less often September, and shut off in October, pretty much.
And, uh, just forgive me for asking this question again, because I realize you've explained it already. But why does it have to go on to the town property?
Because the plants are on the town property. And, and part, part of, part of the agreement that I went through with, and again, this, it's been, you know, a great relationship with the chief. I really appreciate all the time he spent talking to me about this. But I, you know, my property line got changed dramatically, or at least the look, the feel, all, without any input at all. And the town was nice enough to, whoever designed it, to include me in the landscape plan, make recommendations going back and forth. It's a substantial investment. And in general, it's intended to beautify that run along the driveway. And, and we're literally talking about a foot and a half. I mean, it's eighteen, it's, it's the smallest space, but they have stuff, there's, there's a lot of plant material in there. And given the lack of soil, it will all die if it's not maintained, which means, you know, we're basically, nothing, nothing to take anybody's eye off, the brick walls that are staring in front of them.
And I, I understand and I respect that. The, the one thing, and it sounds like you've had multiple conversations with Chief Sowers, but I think that that's the part that I'm stuck with a little bit, is that I appreciate where you are, but you planted, it's almost like you, I feel like you backed us into a corner already because we say, well, we can't, maybe we can't make the decision tonight, you know, like, oh, the plants are gonna die.
I haven't backed, I haven't backed anybody in the corner. They, they, in fact, I, I've been suggesting to the, to the site manager, wait until September, till the whole project is done, to put the plantings in. And they wanted to go ahead and put these in, very much the opposite.
Sounds like the, the, the building folks put the, uh, these plantings in, not you? As a way, as a way to buffer your residents from the ongoing construction of the future fire station?
I, I wouldn't, I, I would just say, you know, it, it's, uh, it was a design implement that the, the architect put there, like, there's a fence on that wall. And the fence.
Who physically planted them? Not, I don't mean you going out with a shovel. But was it, did you instruct people to plant them, or did the town? Okay, that's, that's the.
It's, it's the town's design, it's the town's GC, it's the GC's landscaper.
What he's doing is maintaining it for us.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just wanna keep it looking nice. That's all.
All right. You know, my concern, and I, I don't know enough about how the, the system works. Pound and weight doesn't either. That I don't want it to, my concern is that we're not causing a structural problem for the wall or anything around it, as well as causing a dangerous situation, or danger should something go wrong.
So wouldn't the architect have known that, dated, if they, when they put that together, the plant together, they designed?
Yeah, but they didn't design for the water.
This looks like a pretty simple miscommunication we're waiting to understand. So I want to get to yes on this. I think it's the neighborly thing to do. So we just need to take a few weeks and make sure that Wayne understands. Let's do that. But if there's any other issues besides that one, let's see if we can hear them up.
No, I think that that's probably where, where your first was recommended, is that, let's give it a couple of weeks. But the concern from Mr. Lisa is that where we are in the environmental world.
I mean, I, I would just think in turn, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, you know, as, uh, as us, you know, when a project's finished, right? Everything that's on the plans has to be there. And so if someone's not taking care of these in the intermediate term, and they're at risk of dying, then the, you know, the landscaper, hence the GC, is gonna have to replant them again to get sign off.
So let's put it on our agenda again for the next week. Let Wayne command, tell us what his concerns are, so we have an understanding. And.
I think it's also a question for.
Could, could I meet with him and show him, like, exactly what, would it be possible to show him on site?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think part of the question is that if it's, if we directed someone to plant the trees and we own the trees, why are we not doing this? That's my, that's another concern. I, you know, why, why should we rely on Tony to do it when the plantings and those things are our responsibility and our property?
So, I mean, I have a little bit of insight into that, just that the cost of a, a full-out irrigation system is, you know, it's an, it's a, it's a decent-sized line item expense. And, and not every commercial property, whether it's, you know, an apartment building, some sort of retail complex, town building. I mean, some people decide to put in irrigation and some people don't. And it's pretty far down on the list in terms of priorities for most people. And so, and I think in this case, it was eliminated as, you know, additional cost to maintenance.
Who didn't know? All right. Are you okay putting it off until two weeks?
Yeah, that makes.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna return to this in a couple of weeks. And maybe I'll stop, I won't be here. I was gonna say, I was gonna stop by with a.
With a bucket of water?
So we're gonna put it on the agenda in two weeks and hopefully have Wayne Amico available to us to give us his thoughts. And yes, Tony, to your question, feel free to reach out to, to the, to the office and see if you can set up a time to meet with Wayne so he can get a good idea as to what's going on.
Sounds great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, all right, bye.
All right, third item for use of town property has to do with Memorial Park, the art in the park. And Art Space Man at June twenty-fifth. Looks like this is for selling artwork. Is this the one that's during the time period?
Same time as the Jazz Festival.
The Jazz Festival? And there are no issues from Wayne speaking to W Fire or L S? And it looks like it just went to the, in Memorial Park during the Jazz. So any questions on this one?
No.
Move to approve the use of Memorial Park for art in the park by Art Space Man on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, from twelve o'clock PM to five o'clock PM, contingent upon compliance of all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines.
Just one question, who is the actual, okay, Quinn Murphy?
Yeah, Wayne.
All right. Anything else? More in favor? Motion passed, you announce. All right, uh, item number twelve is the one-day special license, same date, June twenty-fifth, for Avery's Tomb at the Jazz Festival. One-day license liquor, sale of alcoholic beverages by Avery's Tomb on the other quarter, at the other court, in conjunction with Jazz Fest. Uh, no problems from the health department, no, uh, police indicated as long as the persons were drinking or in an enclosed area that's monitored. So it's not to leave with the beer, they have relations. Is somebody here to speak to this?
Yeah, I'm, mine is the beer.
There you are.
I didn't recognize you.
You should wear an orange, you look like, I don't know, you look like you're coming right out of the state prison.
The dad's Richard.
Almost compliments, Alan.
Rick's, Rick's here as well.
Yeah, I, I stole my son's laptop, so it says Henry Baron instead of Richard, so.
All right, so tell us a little bit about your plan and how you'll accommodate the proposal here, or the concern expressed by the police.
So we've worked with DJ, um, who's one of the two people hosting this with the cultural council. That morning, we're gonna have to make some adjustments based on what the perimeter looks like, because they're bringing in Jersey barriers. What we had proposed on the original proposal to the town. um, was that we would make sure that any of the enter, entry points beyond those Jersey barriers are supposed to be narrow, I guess, to keep cars out. Um, so it'd be almost like gates or, or regular entry points, if you will. Uh, would be to provide both signage there that said no alcohol beyond this point and trash receptacles. Um, and then, um, we had also talked about making sure that each person had a green wristband, so that it's easy to spot them um, at a distance. And so we know, you know what I mean, somebody, if they have a drink, we can see them, that they're, you know, able to have a drink, things like that. We did discuss if the additional pinch points or additional fencing was required, that we could put in caution tape um, or something along those lines, along stanchions, some way of marking off an area. Um, but the goal was not to separate people and have them, um, it sounds like this is one area, it's about a hundred feet by seventy feet. If, it might be off a little bit, but um, the goal would be to have that whole area basically um, accessible so that, you know, it wouldn't split people up. I know the early years on Maynard Fest up at the parking lot, with the issue of the fireworks, they were in like a small fencing area, and over time, it kind of grew into the entire area as they realized how to monitor and handle a group. And this is gonna be much smaller. Obviously, I've heard, I guess, about a hundred people are expected versus, um, you know, a thousand or so at a time.
I think, I think the chief's comments, again, I'm spectating. In fact, I think the chief's comments, as you wanted it set up in a fashion, you were hesitant to set it up. My answer for four.
I guess I, I might, I might have missed it. I apologize. But so what do you wanna set it up as now? You said that it might be changing because.
Oh, we said, if, if the Jersey barriers that are there aren't sufficient for like a fencing or a barrier, that we would add additional, additional barrier. Does that make sense? So we would add additional caution tape or stanchions. Um, but DJ said we, we couldn't see what that looks like until that day, as they're setting up, because the barriers will not be provided until that morning. And so we kind of.
The night, the night before, they're gonna be there the night before, Alan.
The night before? Okay. So we were just trying to be as flexible as we could to make sure that we would add as needed, if that makes sense, as opposed to take away.
We have a lot. We have a lot of barriers we've gotten in grants.
But you, you, you don't want to have the drinking customers separated from others that are watching the Jazz Fest, right? You want them to be able to go back to their chair and sit, and sit on their beer.
Correct, correct. Yeah, our goal was, I mean, if they're gonna be separated out, um, there's a good chance they'll just come to our beer garden, and we didn't really wanna detract from the event. The goal was to keep people there, um, versus having them leave if they're gonna be separated from, you know, other members of the family or whoever might be there. Um, we thought that they might, you know, they may not just stay at the Jazz Fest. So our goal was to try and keep them there.
Sense is that, uh, that's the concern that the chief has in his comment. And he doesn't wanna have a situation where the police don't know who should be, not, not be whatever. And I know you're gonna give the wristbands to identify, but I think the chief wants to minimize the responsibility of his officers uh, as much as possible, is my guess, so that he can, they can have a good view as to who's in that area.
Have you done this with the P C though, for, for Maynard Fest? With P C is they've had this in before. There's kids.
Outside food area, I think. I don't know.
If, if, if I may, this is how our beer garden actually operated the first year prior to the, um, non-contiguous premises uh, allowance by the A B C C. So we operated our entire first year under this exact model.
Down in, in the alleyway?
In the alleyway, yeah, with, with the access points and, and trash cans and signs at those points, and the ability to monitor people. We use bracelets in order to, to see, um, you know, at a distance who, who was. We also, you know, are clear in communicating that you can't leave the area. I mean, most of the time, signs, no alcohol beyond this point have been considered to be the, the standard or the norm, if that makes sense, when leaving a public area, you know, or to go into a public area. If that makes.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying to prevent this. I'm trying to, to respect the police's concern relative to how, how it goes forward. And I don't wanna think, have him think we ignored his suggestion relative to what he wants, but this is not one that we can put off because of the event this weekend. So we have to make a decision and hopefully we'll be able to get the police. And I know, you know, you guys are gonna be responsible. So I, I realize that they're responsible businessmen and will work with it, so.
Do, do we have the, the ability to maybe meet with Chief Noble, um, just to, to see and, and to, to add on as needed? I mean, the idea, if we can do it, as long as it's contingent upon his approval of, of what that premises is, you know, the night before or whatever. Um, you know, work with him. I'd be happy to walk over and, you know, and go through it with him and see what additional area would be needed, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. Uh, give him a call or give the office a call and get in touch with him or, or deputy, who might be the one, you know, whoever he assigns, lieutenant. He'll love to make sure everybody's on board. I'm sure they will. I'm sure they'll work with you.
So can we do something in, you know, um, contingent upon his, his final sign off? Is that possible?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else that you have, Alan?
I don't, I don't know if Rick does.
No, he covered it.
Okay. Henry, any? Okay, uh, is there a motion? If we can add on that contingency.
Move to approve the one-day special license for the sale of alcoholic beverages by Avery's Tomb in Naver Court in conjunction with the Mayor Jazz Fest, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, contingent upon the approval of the Mayor Police Department.
The comments? All in favor?
Alan, Alan, I just wanna personally thank you for pulling this all together. I know that you're nice folk and you were having some concern and you're gonna be able to move, and I appreciate you stepping up.
Yeah, we're happy to do it if we can, so.
What are you gonna do? Bring over like cags over there? How is it, how is it gonna be?
No. We're, uh, the plan is canned sales. So we'll have recycling, you know, our recycling receptacles will be right there. Um, and just do canned sales. It also helps us to monitor as well. You know, it's not like switching into, to cups, things like that.
Hopefully it's a successful day for you guys, Jeff.
Thank you.
Weather looks like it's gonna be really good. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Topic was thirteen, which we already have done. We'll move on to fourteen, which is an application for the band of public license at the Elks. Your director, name, which we have done this multiple times. Let's see, does the Elks have a representative there?
I'm here.
Hi, Flo. Tell us a little bit about the new director and what's happening.
The, uh, we merged, uh, Clinton Lodge closed, and they merged with us. So in them merging, we are changing our name to Maynard Clinton Lodge of Elks one, five, six, eight. So we needed to incorporate their name into it, which is the change.
That's all it is? It has nothing to do with personnel?
Nope. We do have a director's change, which is just updating, um, updating the officers. The exalted ruler and so forth.
Sounds good to me. Any questions from the board? Their motion? Their motion?
Sure. Move to approve the amendment to the public license to show new directors in name change for the main Clinton Lodge of Elks, number one, five, six, eight, at thirty-four Harbor Mill Road as presented, adding, adding Clinton to the name.
All right, motion made in second. Any further comments? All in favor? unanimously. Back to Flo.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Item number fifteen is the transfer application for common big license for a mayor nutrition at forty-three Mason Street. It's gonna be a new owner. Is Ethan Salto coming here?
Yes, sir. Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about what's going on and, uh, what we need to do.
Um, not a lot. We're doing the same exact thing. We're just taking over the business and hoping to expand it into more into the community and incorporating ourselves in with the community. Um, we are looking to continue sales of, um, exactly what they have, um, possibly adding a few more snacks. But other than that, everything will be generally the same.
Okay. So in essence, this has nothing to do with allowing something that wasn't previously allowed or anything like that. It's just a name change.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board? No? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the transfer of common picture license to the new owner. Even Salto with Donna for major nutrition at forty-three Mason Street.
Okay, any further discussion? Good luck. Good luck and welcome.
Thank you.
Mark.
Thank you so much.
Next item is our.
Is our Board of Health. Our faithful watcher.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Maybe I should sort of mistake, because I don't have much voice still. Thank you for having us. We did. Yeah, it was.
You guys deserve an award.
Exactly what I was gonna say. I'll preview this by saying this has been one hell the last couple of years for the Philadelphia, in a small community like ours.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome. You stepped right in the fire. And, uh, you know, really, really appreciate the effort and the time and the stress that this whole.
Thank you.
Wide epidemic in place on a small.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's something I don't wanna relive. Yeah, either way.
Or the right, because it's amazing.
So welcome, give us your presentation and, and you'll ask and answer questions.
Okay. So I am here to represent the Mayor Board of Health for our fiscal twenty-two overview. And I'm Kathy, those that don't know me. So our leader is myself, is the Chair. Lisa Butt is the Vice Chair, and Jody Larkin is our newest member. Um, Personnel is John Robertson, is our Health Agent. We have contracted Personnel is Kathy Castle, our end public health nurse from Emerson. And Beth Grossman is our Food Inspector. Hope you can all hear me. Our mission is to develop and maintain innovative programs to safeguard and improve the general health of the citizens, the town of Maynard. This mission is accomplished through provisions of appropriate services and enforcement of applicable regulations, i.e. state, CDC, and mass public health. Of programming operations, we are responsible for a wide range of health and environmental concerns, including the promotion of public health, control of dangerous disease, and protection of the environment. And that would also include monitoring cases of trends for triple E and West Nile virus, since we're in that season. The department provides communicable disease investigation and prevention programs through the state-run Maven database. The board reviews and issues permits, oversees inspections and enforcement food establishment, which would also include inspections and permits regarding farmers' markets and Maynard Fest, semi-public swimming pools, recreational camps, funeral directors, solid waste and septic haulers, tanning establishments, dumpsters, and tobacco establish establishments. Those are our main areas of focus on an everyday basis.
What are sharps? Needles.
Needles, right, right. Personal protective equipment. Emergency preparedness on mosquito controls on the. And then the next is what the Mass Health Officers Association, I know it's very difficult to read. John has a copy on his wall upstairs, if anybody wants to see A to Z, what the, um, public health is responsible for. And I learned a new one last meeting. We also oversee deeper population out of season. That was first for me.
Not great.
They're not good. Yeah. Yeah. That's what I learned. Right, right. The Board of Health is, is responsible for regulations covering housing, solid waste and wastewater, onsite disposal systems. And in regards to housing, includes scheduling, participating in hearings for housing issues, violations, disputes between landlords and tenants. We try to help resolve issues and keep, make them keep compliance with housing codes. Um, public health also has a role to play in the emergency preparedness and planning response. Master plan, although the Board of Health has not directly identified responsibilities in the master plan, the board supports economic development through plan reviews, permitting for new establishments, events, and festivals. Additionally, we support housing goals, working to ensure existing housing available for renters to meet minimum standards for human habitability. Our partners at Metro is collaborative, are working with Council and Aging Director to discuss needs and potential programs, as mentioned in P F S five dash two of the master plan. And Public Health is prepared to support D B W in addressing under P F S one dash one of the master plan. Our guidance is the master plan, state codes, getting housing, food, solid waste, Title V, swimming pools, and of course, the town of Maynard bylaws. Our metrics, F Y twenty-two highlights, we've had numerous cases under housing, some were COVID-related. We held four successful COVID vaccine clinics, and we are currently working on possible booster clinics for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, one of those clinics was early on with the getting of the dosage, being vaccinated the elderly in conjunction with, uh, council and age. We facilitate contact tracing efforts in coordination with public health nurses, Metro West, M R C volunteers. We still continue to contact positive cases, um, even though we are no longer required to do so via the state. We provide guidance on COVID-related issues, regarding testing, vaccines, CDC guidance, updated webpages, including COVID information and food recalls. Thank you, John. Um, as you know, this is regarding twenty-one, but we did lose one member in February of twenty twenty-one. And I was voted in as Chair. Our Health Agent, Kelly Polichonic, left in late spring of twenty-one. Um, the town Hudson Health Agent covered for us for approximately five to six months. And the town of Acton covered for approximately six weeks. And then in November of twenty twenty-one, Mr. Robertson was hired. Uh, we worked to roll out the police Tyrene and single-use bag bylaws communication. And we have heard from several business owners. We keep in contact with them with their questions regarding this as well. Permitting. We have issued over one hundred permits. We issued in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Didn't correct my. Um, our permits are based on a calendar year, not the fiscal year. We had over eighty food-related permits, four semi-public swimming pools, eight tobacco, and thirty-four plan reviews. We had over eighty food-related permits, four semi-public swimming pools, eight tobacco, and thirty-four plan reviews. Budget.
I have a question.
Yep.
Where do we have four semi-public swimming pools in that year?
The condos are considered.
Right, condos. No, okay, yeah. So they're condos. Yeah. Everybody asked that, so. FY twenty twenty-two budget was eighteen thousand four oh two. We have requested for twenty twenty-three, twenty thousand. And that increase in part is due to the cost of mosquito control going up. Right.
It's eastern.
Eastern, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. The Board of Health signed a memorandum of understanding with the Metro West Regional Shared Services. And continues to coordinate with other local communities to assess additional public health services. That includes eight communities that we are working with. And the resources include an epidemiologist, public health nurse, inspector, community health workers, communication specialists, so on. And from what we have met with a couple of them, it's a really good collaborative to be in. Increased collaboration among Maynard's boards, commissions, and departments, as well as with local and regional organizations to maximize opportunities. Review and update permitting, renewals, Board of Health regulations, bylaws, and the B schedule. We continue to assess community needs and gaps in services, develop and offer services. To promote work to promote prevention of public health-related issues as opposed to a reactionary approach. We have taken on a proactive approach. Here now, we now have a full-time health agent, which really helps. We are also working with the police and Council of Aging to work with some of these. We would like to implement board docs. Continued partnership with Emerson Public Health Nurses and participate in the MRC reorganization.
I did have one question and I saw that one of the list items that you are involved in. Under street codes, could he style five? Do we have any stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have.
We do, yeah. We actually processed an installer permit and a disposal works application today. So there's not a lot. Most of the towns on sewer, but there is some.
I think we had one on Field Street. And Kelly is here. We had to call her, yeah.
Questions for the board? I know one one issue that concerns the spring to do with mosquitoes on occasion, do you know if we're going to see that this season? Or? And can you just refresh my memory on who controls the spray in the state and this that we.
Right. Right, some of it is state, and I think they did this spring.
So I mean, I can speak a little bit. So the eastern middlesex mosquito control that we're a part of. So they did already did this year. They did a larva side, which was not spraying, you know, it's put out, it's a biological agent to try and keep the. The larva from becoming adults. The spraying is to treat adults later. We don't, we don't participate in spraying with eastern middlesex. If the state sprays, that's that's beyond our, that's the state's decision. But we don't do the trucks that we don't contract out the trucks to the neighborhoods. We've had questions about opting out. That's where people would opt out, so we don't, we don't have that occur to have people opt out of that.
It was the application method of the law.
So if they do drop it into wetlands from helicopters. And then they also throughout the season they'll treat like catch basins and identified areas.
I have a question about the the Metro West Regional Shared Services, and it's more whether or not this is an opportunity. One thing that we hear a lot about is the need for, you know, more medical health. Assistance and social work and things like that. And I'm wondering if I know one thing that did come up at one point during a meeting was that a lot of times. You know, we have resources with the police department, but sometimes people don't go home, people going to the police or, you know, getting the referrals from the police. And I'm wondering, is that maybe an avenue we can explore? To be able to refer people, you know, is there anywhere, is there anything in that that we could tap into possibly?
You want to take that?
Right, I know they can because we've used them.
Sure, yeah. So in the collaborative, there is a community health worker who's who's not a clinical social worker. But they they do help with trying to connect some of the wraparound services that we're looking for. I would, I would strongly support the idea of getting a social worker to tie in with with the department of the town. I just think there's services there that I don't have the skills to provide or or the ability. For example, I multiple housing inspections, and in fact, a lot of times there's a mental health component. So while we want to treat things that are, you know, physical in nature, like a broken window or a hole in the roof. There's probably a lot of times there's also the people living there might have other needs. That I don't have the capability to address, but a social worker or a health worker might be able to take the time to connect with resources, complete applications, find some funding. And, you know, I've I've worked with the clinician Emily Black at the police department on a couple of cases. Officer McKinnon is is awesome, but she's free. I just think there's maybe more demand than than there there's capability at this point. And I think having access to a social worker or something along those lines. Kind of bring up the level of service we can provide to people in town.
Are there cases for regionalized services like that?
So I'm not, the answer is I'm not sure. You know, the collaborative doesn't have a social worker in there. Some of the other towns have bigger departments that they already have their own staff. It was not one of the positions that was put in for the grant that created the collaborative. I certainly welcome the opportunity to share services for that.
We're also, I had a meeting with Emerson today to talk about our public health nursing contract. And so the nurses that we work with are. They work in Maynard, Concord, Carlisle, and Lincoln, I think. And so I brought up the need for that additional service and asked if they had received questions from these other communities and said, is this. You know, another add-on that you'd consider adding to our public health nursing? So, you know, they're starting to look into it. So I, we're definitely exploring regionalization and. Whether, like John said, it wasn't part of the collaborative. We discussed it at the beginning and the formation of it, and I wish it was part of it, but, you know, the funding is kind of distributed under certain. You know, guidance that has to be stuck to and so, but I think there could be an opportunity through Emerson potentially to do something like that. If there's additional need. That's breaking news.
Thank you.
You have a question, the board? Question. More, I guess, theoretical. Having been through, as we started the conversation, having been through. What lessons do you think we can take away as to how to better improve the whole issue of public health in Maynard? Way that we communicate and what are your lessons learned? What were the big lessons and what can we do better?
Yeah, I think, I think. I hope not. I think the biggest thing we've learned is to communicate and communicate with the town, with the other wards. And. Look for more resources to, because this was a. Pandemic that came in so fast. And none of us have seen it before, so everybody was trying to figure out how to work with this and how to do this. So in. You were getting different answers from everywhere you went to, so from CDC down, so. I think we have learned to communicate much better. And use resources. Thankfully, we have John on board, so that's a big help. Where we didn't in twenty twenty-one, twenty, yeah, so.
And your meetings now, many of them have a number of people watching.
Right.
Which probably didn't happen all that frequently in the past. So in many ways it helps the community to understand what the Board of Health does.
Right.
Their focus is beyond, beyond pandemic. That's the whole litany of what the Board of Health does.
Right.
Focuses on, oh, help. Well, there's a lot more behind this than just help.
Exactly, exactly, and even housing too, to be able to educate the public that it's. It's not just a phone call to us. There's a lot of steps to it, and there are state guidelines that we have to follow in regards to inspections. And somebody can call, but if they don't let us in, there's nothing we can do, so. So to be able to teach the public certain things as well of what we do. You know, and it has been helpful to have a moment, you know, not when they're so adversarial, but it is helpful in that way too. You know, to hear everybody's side, so. It is, yeah, it is.
All right, anything else?
Thank you very much. I'm thinking actually the implementation of word docs, do you have any sort of limitations or whatever that goes right now?
We just have to do a couple other, it's just a lot of priority, I think, but it's, no, just an administrative switch.
Thank you. Appreciate everything.
Thank you all so much. I watch it online.
Now you don't have to.
That's it, exactly.
You're done.
We're done.
The contracts, we have two of them. Open initiative program. Site off of Parker Street in Maynard.
Yes, this is the regulatory agreement that will restrict the four-bedroom, single-family house as portable. And this is really. Unusual and fantastic to have a unit like this as part of our inventory in Maynard. So this is really something to be proud of. We worked closely with Regional Housing Services Office and the developer Walter Erickson, the Affordable Housing Trust was involved. And so now we're at the point where we're asking the board to approve this regulatory agreement to protect this unit, this house. So that it will always remain restricted and be for affordable families in the future.
And so it's, I think it was sold through.
They haven't closed yet, but yes, they have. Yes.
And it's one of the houses along the roadway, I mean, the.
The one you can see from the hill.
Yeah, which one did. But the board did have, the, or the housing trust did have discussions, negotiations, debates over which house it should. Because we felt that it needed to be at the same amenities, which is the requirement as the others. At the end of the day. We resolved it and we were, the house is the house. So, yeah, it's exciting for us that it will be permanent and will always have, you know, it's a beautiful home. I have not given a sign. It's identical to others, must be. By law. Okay.
Just want to clear this is permanent. There's no need to call back. There's no way to latch back and fall out of the system.
Good question. You know, if we didn't have the Regional Housing Services Office, then yes, I mean, with changes of staff and, you know, contacts with the state. These are things that need to be monitored regularly, regularly. And so by having, you know, this monitoring in place, anytime they, you know, the the new owner wants to sell. It has to go through a whole process. So we do have eyes on it, and it does take administrative work going forward to protect both the rental and the owns, that, you know, who owns.
It's deemed that way too, so that when somebody goes to do, they get, someone would get twenty years.
Yeah.
It would be registered that way and come up on the.
That's right.
Okay, any other questions?
I move to approve the regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive, restrictive covenants for ownership project, local action units for old day growth development. Located at a sixteen-thicker site on Parker Street in Maynard.
Second.
Okay. Second contract, you may recall, the last meeting we had Greg talked about, he did one of these house doctors. Contracts with another service. And describe how basically you're creating a list of opportunities, businesses to grab from, projects to be worked on. This is just another. House doctor contract that will be part of that list. We can choose from. Nothing changes, we don't want our part. We use these people, it's just an option that we have relative to. Certain projects that you don't have to get those, your staff. Questions, comments?
Sounds good.
Now we'll take a motion.
Move to approve the house doctor contract for design services. Nero Court, formerly known as the Giorgio Associates Incorporated, for a term for the inspired new twenty first twenty twenty-five.
We're gonna comment on the questions. Long fairing. Pass the next. Next item is chair report. I really don't have much this week. The last two weeks, as Justine knows, have been a whirlwind with. Fiscal graduation, parties that follow, graduations to all the kids that made it through today, I guess, was the last day of school for the rest of the group. So I think I mentioned the last time, graduations in school system for another great year. You know, Maynard has a lot to be proud of and. Kids that graduated, we hope that they remember their roots and that they do great things as we expect that they will. That really is my only comment. I'm going to be out of town beginning Thursday, so I'm not going to be able to. To the gas festival this weekend, but I hope it's a tremendous success. The weather, as I mentioned earlier, looks absolutely fantastic. Not even fingers crossed, I think it's clear. It's going to be a beautiful weekend. That is it for me. So Chris?
Good, good.
Yeah, just one comment, budget subcommittee met last week at the last triword meeting. Toss around the idea about having more of an informational session about the budget process we need towards. What would be behind more of an operational right at the budget subcommittee meeting, since that triword meeting, I think we realized that. For next year's budget, the kind of dominant conversation will be. Educational areas around figuring out how to. Get voters to understand the behind the drive, behind the new school and the mechanics of that anticipated vote for next spring. So we will not be having the operational override discussion as mentioned, but we just wanted to communicate that back to the full boards. As we continue to talk about how to fund both that school building and all the other priorities that we've been hearing about.
Oh, I got anything else to say, but hopefully we have a successful. Well, I got anything else to say, but hopefully we have a successful Jazz Festival. And I am so proud of the committee that put together. Mr. B K for sure. Champion, giving this, you know. Everything seems to be falling into place. Excited about it. It's going to be a buzz in town, get farmers.
Farmers market opens this week?
Yeah. Saturday, farmers market, get Carson Park Jazz.
All right.
All right.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, everyone who's still not online.